Chairman Maloney is absent this evening. Commissioner Gary Clark.
Hi.
Commissioner Didi Clement.
I, sorry, I was on mute.
You were raising your hand?
Was I? Okay.
Commissioner Brian Ledoux. I believe he's absent. Commissioner Paula Shugley.
I, here.
Let me see here. Commissioner Randy Smith.
Here.
Acting as vice chair tonight. Commissioner Dustin Maz. Okay, so, we do have an appropriate number of council people or planning commission members here, so although we don't have any items for voting, we do have a quorum. So let me get my presentation back up here. So before I begin my presentation, I do want to let you all know about the status of the RFP that we put out right at the beginning of February to solicit proposals to update our comprehensive plan as well as our Title 16 and Title 17 zoning subdivision and development regulations. This was, it was a very thorough RFP that we put out and we held a question and answer session. We actually had quite a nice attendance, both in person on February 27th and over, you know, teleconferencing, folks who had phoned into the meeting. The deadline for proposals was actually March 30th and given what was going on with building closures and, you know, the stay-at-home orders and whatnot, what we agreed to do was treat the proposals that we got, as long as they were postmarked by the 4:00 PM March 30th date, we would honor them. We would consider them to be part of the pile that we got. And we were quite surprised when what we got was a total of eight proposals. We were expecting, given the sale of the project, the short timeline and the budget that we were discussing, maybe three or four at most. We got eight. That was very good. We were in a very luxurious position of being able to determine which proposals didn't make the cut and then schedule interviews with the four firms that we did like. So we narrowed the list down to the top four that we liked, contacted them late last week, scheduled interviews with them over the last two days, two Monday and two yesterday. And I think we were all fairly impressed with the four that we interviewed. I do believe that there is a consensus among the people who were on the interview panel as well as the folks who reviewed the, all of the proposals that we got. That was a committee made up of myself, city engineer Adam Lancaster, our administrator Ryan Stevens, Jerry Maloney as planning commission chair, and John Hamrick as a representative from council. After having whittled the original list of eight down to four and having now interviewed those four, I do believe that we have a consensus as to who our top pick is. I'm probably going to be spending some time tomorrow calling on references that were provided for this top firm and if the references check out and if we don't get any, any red flags, for example, from our city attorneys that they may have worked with these folks in other communities and they ran into problems with them, we will probably be in a position to announce sometime Friday who that firm is, which will be very exciting because now that the stay-at-home order is being modified to a safer-at-home order and we can actually go out and walk into businesses again, we will, beginning in May, start working out the plans for our outreach on the update of the comprehensive plan. A comprehensive plan has a lot of public input that needs to be built into it because it's a very important document brought in from public opinion. So, these are exciting times for planning commission because you're all going to be involved in this process going forward as these consultants come and will probably be doing joint sessions with planning commission and council to update you on what is going on with this effort. But I did want to bring you into the loop. This is where we are in the process now and in another week, we should actually be kicking things off. Fingers crossed.
Hey Patrick, this is Gary.
Hi Gary.
Yeah, how are you guys making that announcement?
Well, when we reach out to, if we contact the references and if we don't get any red flags from them or our city attorneys, then what we will do is probably contact them, let the firm know that they are the ones that are selected and determine whether or not from their proposal there are budgetary items that we may need to negotiate. Assuming that that is successful, we will make a formal announce, well, we'll make an informal announcement to planning commission and council by email, but I think the formal announcement will probably go out through our PIO on local social media and we may even do up some sort of a press release that we send to the Canyon City Daily Record.
Thank you.
Did anyone else have any questions about that? If you want, once we get the details finalized and we have, in fact, signed with the firm that's at the top of everyone's list, I can send you all electronic versions of the proposal if you would like to see it.
I would love to see it. This is Paula.
Okay. Not a problem. I can, if we didn't get an electronic submittal included with their proposal, I can scan it and email it to you. You may lose some image quality, but I think you will find their proposal to be fairly thoroughly thought out and I can tell you that when we interviewed them, they knocked their socks off.
Wow, that sounds exciting.
Okay, so since Catherine is not able to join us yet, we can go ahead with my presentation if you want.
Okay.
Okay. So, on the subject of my presentation, planning commission training, land use practices in Canyon City. So what you're looking at right here is something of a flow chart of the various land use applications that we have by type in Canyon City. Now, it starts at the very general with annexation and zoning. That's the process that's probably the most ambiguous and amorphous in terms of the regulations that it's going to have to conform to. With annexation, you've really only got state statutes to guide you as to the amount of connectivity a particular piece of property has to an existing boundary. And when it comes to zoning, what you generally rely on is your comprehensive plan and its land use element to determine what, what will be the appropriate zoning for a property that's seeking to annex into the city. The next process that you have would be rezoning and this would come after the annexation and zoning of the property. This is a request, obviously, to change the zoning on the property that currently exists. Once you get through those phases, you move into the plating or subdivision of land and we've got a variety of different application types that come into play here. These range from a PDD subdivision, sketch and preliminary subdivision, a regular sketch and preliminary subdivision, a minor subdivision, and a subdivision exemption plat. Once you get beyond the plating of land, and this is where you're subdividing a piece of ground into buildable lots, depending upon the scale of the subdivision you're proposing, it may involve rights of ways that have to be dedicated, it may involve tracks or outlots for purposes of drainage, maybe for purposes of parks, neighborhood parks that would be built into the development, et cetera. Once you get through that process and you actually have subdivided lots upon which you can develop, you move into either a plot plan that's associated with a residential property where someone wants to build and go vertical, or a site plan, and this is for non-residential and multifamily residential parcels, where what you're doing is submitting a proposal that shows how the buildings that will be going on-site meet setback requirements under zoning and height restrictions under zoning. It will illustrate how the parking configuration is laid out and whether or not the amount of parking that's being provided is adequate. It will lay out how the property is accessed from adjacent streets. It will lay out any improvements that may need to be made to the adjacent streets based upon things like traffic studies and whether the traffic study indicates that the street is going to need to have an acceleration or deceleration lane put in when accessing the parking lot. It may lay out in some conditions, things like whether or not the parking lot lighting, how it's laid out and whether the parking lot lighting could be ground directed and shielded so that there's no sideways spillage of light. Once you get through the site plan or plot plan components, and the plot plan components, it's just demonstrating that the house you're proposing to build meets setbacks. I sign off on that as part of a building permit. Then you go into the process of obtaining grading access and floodplain permits. These come through the city engineer's office or building permits, obviously, those come through our building officials' office. And then the various inspections as construction is going on and as construction is concluding, all the way up to the certificate of occupancy being issued, and that's where generally the conclusion of the land use process occurs. Now, we can get applications for any one of these at any point in this flow chart, depending upon where a piece of ground is in this flow chart's development schedule. Now, the reason this is important is, we have as part of these hearing requirements or approval requirements that come in. The ones that you're seeing highlighted in red up there are quasi-judicial proceedings. These are generally items that will require adoption of an ordinance in order for them to be approved and as such, council has the option to approve by ordinance. The ordinance requires two readings. The public hearing generally occurs at the first reading and should there be public opposition to the adoption of that ordinance, there can always be a public challenge to that in the form of a ballot box initiative where the public could then potentially by majority vote overturn the council's opinion. I don't believe that has happened in recent years in Canyon City, but that is the way the quasi-judicial process would work in Canyon City. The next layer that we have are what we call legislative processes. Legislative processes differentiate themselves from quasi-judicial processes in that with a quasi-judicial process, you've got both planning commission to some extent and council acting as a judge on something that might be nebulously defined in terms of its applicability and standards. For instance, when you have a comprehensive plan that's 19 years old and someone has proposed annexation of a property to the city and that annexation wasn't contemplated in the plan that's now 19 years old, you're going on a gut instinct kind of a level to determine whether or not that annexation is desirable and/or prudent. Legislative projects, on the other hand, generally have a set of defined criteria that they must show they comply with. That's going to be in the case of subdivisions, whether or not the lots that you're creating are of an adequate size under zoning, that they have an adequate lot frontage under zoning. If you're having to do public improvements, you're going to have to demonstrate that the public improvements are being built, designed to city specifications and that's going to be on things like the widths of rights of way, width of the street, low line, sidewalk width, the grading of the streets so that you don't have great big hills that are impassable in winter conditions. You're going to have to demonstrate that all of the lots that you're creating do have adequate access to a street to begin with so that no lot can be denied in access. You're going to have to demonstrate that you graded the site appropriately so that it drains correctly and doesn't create downstream problems for people who might be downhill of this particular subdivision. You're going to have to demonstrate all of those standards that the code will say are necessary and prudent in order for a subdivision to be approved. And the list of those requirements will increase with the complexity of the subdivision. For example, a minor subdivision, your limitations are, it cannot be a proposal that is more than 10 acres in total area and it cannot propose to create more than five lots. If you exceed either of those criteria, you fall into the realm of a major subdivision, which then requires both a sketch and a preliminary plan. The third category of applications that we have are the ones that are administratively approved. These are the ones that, because they are the most binary, either it complies or it doesn't comply and the criteria are the most simple that we have by code definition, these are the ones that staff processes. They do not go forward to public hearings unless staff finds for some reason that it should be denied and the applicant wants to challenge that decision. That generally doesn't happen. If there's a flaw in the application, we generally go back to the applicant and say, this is what you need to fix. They generally go away with their consultant, fix it and bring it back and at that point we can approve it. So we have certainly done a vast number of subdivision exemptions over time in just the two years I've been here using that process. That is the most simple type of subdivision. You start with no more than three lots, you end up with no more than three lots. In some cases, you're combining lots, you end up with fewer. In some cases, it's simply moving a lot line so that one lot will increase in size and one lot will decrease in size. In a lot of cases, it's a lot split. You start with one lot and you end with two. So we have certainly processed a number of those. Similarly, when it comes to the PUD final plat and then the final plat for major subdivisions, last year, planning commission and council adopted an ordinance that said, okay, provided that those do not have any material changes from what was approved at public hearing for a preliminary plat, the final plat in either a PUD or a major subdivision can be administratively approved. If staff finds that there are major changes to what was approved, that the applicant will then have to go back and get a reapproval on a revised preliminary plat, going back to planning commission and council. And then obviously, all of the rest of these, the site plan, in this case, there's also the plot plan for building permits, the grading permits, all of those are administratively processed and issued. There is no public hearing involved in those. So those are the three categories that our land use applications fall into when we get a submittal. Now, the ones that have to go to planning commission and council for hearing must be conducted as public hearings. Those are the applications that fall into either the quasi-judicial or legislative type of project. Now, what you're looking at here is an exhibit that you actually saw back in March. This was the Seeds Property Rezoning Request, the corner of Orchard Avenue and Pear Street. And I'm bringing this up because this was a public hearing. This was a quasi-judicial item that planning commission and council had to consider. Now, public hearings occur to provide the city's appointed and elected officials. That's obviously, planning commission and city council to consider the nature of a land use request. This is done to give all stakeholders an opportunity to either speak in favor of or against the application. It's also done so that the planning commission and council have the opportunity to evaluate the staff's analysis of the project and determine whether or not they think, from the staff's analysis, the project is worthy of approval. Now, following the public hearing, planning commissioner, city council will enter a deliberation stage. This is where the relative merits or concerns about the request are voiced. This can lead to conditions that are being imposed upon the request. And then at the conclusion of that, if any conditions have been added, there is a motion that's made to dispose of the land use application. That motion is seconded and it is voted upon. Now, when I say dispose, I don't mean throwing away. I mean that there is a logical end point to all public hearing items that have to go before a public body. And I'll get to what those options are in consideration in a slide in a moment, but I wanted to at least make sure, from a public hearing standpoint, the end goal is to have some disposition of the project going forward. Now, what you're looking at here is a matrix that we created that identifies the requirements for public notice by application type. This is very important. All public hearings require public notice to be issued for the date and time that the public hearing is going to be conducted. By the municipal code, these requirements will vary by application type, but they will involve typically one or more of the following and the code will specify which. Mailed notices to all property owners within 300 feet of the property, which is the subject of the land use request. Signs advertising the public hearing date and time posted on-site facing an adjacent right-of-way where it can be read. Notice of the public hearing being published in the newspaper of local circulation, which in our case is obviously the Daily Record. And then finally, these notices must all be accomplished at least 15 calendar days before the scheduled hearing date and time. Typically, for planning commission and what we can do, we've offered advocacy opportunity to combine notices for planning commission and council if they so choose. But what that means is, for planning commission dates that will occur on a Wednesday, you're looking at the Tuesday, two weeks preceding it in order to have all of these notices completed in time. Now, where that will run into problems is when it comes to the newspaper publication. You generally can't run in and get it published the next day. You generally have to get the notice into them several days in advance of when you need that notice to run. Now, with the mailings, as long as we get certification that the mailing, and it's the applicant that has to do this, the mailing was done at least 15 days prior to the hearing, it doesn't matter when the letter arrives, as long as we have an affidavit from the applicant that specifies, yes, we got the mailings into the mail within that 15-day window of time before that 15-day countdown on the calendar began, we're good. Similarly, with the signs, they have to provide us an application or an affidavit that shows the signs were posted on property at least 15 days prior to the hearing. So those are your requirements for public hearings getting noticed. And what you see with these green and red dots on the matrix next to you is which is applicable. And again, this is all specified by code. So for instance, most of the notices that have to be published are prior to a council hearing. The notices that have to be mailed out and signs posted on property are typically required for planning commissions and you also have signs posted on property as a requirement for council hearing dates as well. Now, adequate public notice is jurisdictional to the hearing. This is extremely important when it comes to hearings. If the public has not been given adequate notice that a land use request is to be considered by either planning commission or council, then the group that's conducting the hearing cannot act upon it. In order for you to have, think of it this way in these legal terms, jurisdiction to say, all right, this matter has come before planning commission and acting as representatives of the city in a republic, a constitutionally-defined republic, we have to know that the people who may have concerns about this or may have thoughts or may want to express support for the project have an opportunity to get their schedules in order to appear so that they can publicly give testimony. That's what the notice is required to do. If that notice was not done in time, then we can't act upon it and you've got no choice but to continue the matter until the public notice defect is corrected.
Patrick, I have a question.
Yes.
That one that you're using as an example, who verifies that these public postings are done correctly?
So the applicant provides us with an affidavit. The affidavit contains, in the case of a sign posting, the picture of the sign, they specify, now that they have in fact done the posting, it was completed by such and such date, that statement is then notarized and they deliver it to us. At that point, because it is a legally-notarized affidavit, we take the applicant's word that they are being truthful. If they're not and we get evidence to conclude that, no, they in fact didn't get it in by the 15 days, that's a notice bust and we have to start over. We have to have them re-notice it, re-affidavit the sign posting and take it to the next available planning commission after the re-notice has been done.
The reason I ask you that question is, when we sat on the property on the corner of Fields and Central, they located that sign facing both streets on that corner. On this last one, it faced the side street, which is technically the least frequented street.
Well, so the ordinance doesn't specify what street a sign has to face. It just says that it has to face a public right-of-way and I think what they did, since the property is addressed off of Pear, was face the signs towards the street where they're addressed. That's probably a pretty logical conclusion. We don't have specifications that say the right-of-way that carries the greater volume of traffic is the one that must be faced. If I had my druthers, what I would do is have applicants err on the side of caution and post a sign that faces all rights of way that the project is adjacent to, but the code doesn't specify that's a requirement. That's just a, something staff would like to see happen.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. So were there any other questions about the notice requirement and how important it is to have adequate public notice for a public hearing?
Nope, it's clear.
Okay. So moving along then. Now, when it comes to the actual conduct of public hearings, there are some things that are fair to consider when it comes to both the testimony that you hear and the questions that you ask of whoever is giving the testimony, whether that's the applicant, staff, or a member of public. And then when it comes to your deliberations, these are things that can be considered as a matter of your deliberations as well. The land use code requirements by application type and advice of recommending documents such as the comprehensive plan or subarea plans. The land use code requirements will typically be fairly binary. They will specify some minimum that must at least be met or some maximum that must not be exceeded and it is fair to consider whether or not those maximums or minimums have been met. The recommending documents such as the comprehensive plan or subarea plans are not necessarily regulatory, but they are advice that had been bought into and accepted at some point in the past by planning commission and council. They are there to serve as reference points that say, based upon these studies that were done, these are priorities for things we would like, the city would like to see happen in particular areas. The comprehensive plan will be most useful when it comes to examining rezoning applications for a piece of property or what zone a person is going to apply for at the time of annexation. The subarea plans will be more important when it comes to maybe redevelopment projects in a particular area. For example, this will still be fresh in everyone's mind, last fall, we approved the riverfront zoning. These districts are sort of redevelopment efforts. We did not formally map them onto the city's official zoning map. What we did was create tools so that when redevelopment opportunities happen, they can happen in accordance with what the Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan recommended, these riverfront zoning districts by type. So that's a subarea plan that will be relevant at such time as we get land use applications along the riverfront corridor. Now, there are maybe points that are raised by members of the public, either for or against an application, and if you think those points are relevant to the application, you may consider those as part of your deliberation. The quality of the proposal or how well or not it answers questions and depicts the applicant's concept. Now, there's always going to be, depending upon who does the work, whether the applicant does it and how much experience they have at drawing and drafting plans, the consultant who drafts them up and how well experienced they are, not only in Canyon City's land use processes, but generally speaking, when it comes to processing applications, what an exhibit map needs to show. There will be some proposals that we get that are just not very well done. We try to work with the applicant to get what we consider to be the items that are deficient corrected. Sometimes they do that, sometimes they don't, and when they don't, we sort of have to tell the planning commission and council, this is sort of a substandard proposal, this is what we make of it, this is what the applicant's proposing. And you could certainly take a look at the quality of the proposal and if you have questions based upon your interpretation of what's being shown, those are fair to consider in the public hearing. The applicant's proposal in context to surrounding land uses, lot configurations and buildings. Now, this will create, will this project, based upon what's being proposed, create land use conflicts where none may exist now? That is a fair consideration in a public hearing. The impact of the proposed development upon the neighborhood. Again, this goes down to, is it creating land use conflicts by virtue of the fact that it may be generating a vast amount of traffic that this neighborhood might not be able to absorb and that there are no particular proposed... absorb, and that there are no particular proposed improvements to surrounding streets? It may be creating a sufficient amount of hardscape so that whatever drainage system may exist in the area may have to be upgraded in order to support that. Those are definite things in terms of the impact of the development that are fair to be considered. And finally, whether or not adequate public notice has been given to conduct the hearing. One of the things that my staff reports generally do on the first page of the staff report is identify the notice requirements and whether or not staff has evidence that from the applicant they have been met. That's always on the first page, and that's always one of the findings of fact that we include for planning commission to adopt at the conclusion of the hearing. There are also some things that are not necessarily fair to consider as part of a public hearing. The first of these is the money that's been spent in the preparation of the application materials, or in the advocacy for or against the project. Some people may post, you know, billboards on their property opposing a particular rezoning request, or a particular subdivision. Some people may be circulating flyers around the neighborhood, or mailers. Some people may even run commercials on local radio stations. That is not a facturable consideration in whether or not a land use application has the merits for approval. The applicant's time spent in Canyon City prior to submitting the application. Whether or not a particular developer is new to the area, or has been here for 20 years, should not be a relevant consideration in the application. Now, whether or not a new developer has submitted something that you can read and interpret, and it makes clear what they're proposing, that's relevant, but if they've only arrived and submitted a subdivision within the last two or three months, you can't hold their newness against them. Similarly, you cannot hold personal feelings about the applicant, the consultant the applicant may be using, or the neighborhood or district where the project is being proposed. Whether or not you like a particular area, have had wonderful or really negative experiences with a particular consultant, you have to treat every applicant the same that comes before you. Catherine will discuss a little bit more about acting from the deus, but for the purposes of a public hearing, what I would say in considering land use applications is, you have to be impartial to everyone who comes before you and not show favoritism. In quasi-judicial matters, personal likes or dislikes of a project is not necessarily relevant. What matters is whether the project can be found to meet criteria for approval. Now, when you're dealing with a quasi-judicial matter, in a lot of cases, the criteria for approval are going to be related to recommending documents such as, as I mentioned, the comprehensive plan or subarea plans. And your ability to base a decision from those is only going to be as good as those reports are. When you have a 19-year-old comprehensive plan, and a lot of changes have happened to the community in a 19-year-old plan, I mean, think about it in this context, a person born at the time the plan was adopted in 2001, graduated from high school last year, that's a lot of change. Municipalities can change a lot in that area of time too. So sometimes you get into situations where your recommending documents may be out of date, and you might not have some of the factors to consider. What you can't do is say, well, I just don't like this particular project. That necessarily, I mean, unless you can pin why you don't like it down to a criteria, that isn't necessarily a relevant consideration. Now, in terms of the disposition of land use requests, and this is what I mentioned a few minutes ago about how to dispose of a matter that's come before you at a public hearing. Planning commission serves as an advisory body. The function of the planning commission is to forward recommendations to city council, which sits as the city's decision-making body. Now, towards that end, planning commission functions as a filter to either slow down projects which do not comply with approval criteria or other relevant considerations, or conversely, to move along projects which do comply. Now, towards that end, planning commission has four options when considering how to dispose of a project following a public hearing. The first is a continuance. If you feel that a project is inadequate in what's been provided, has poor quality to it, and you want the applicant to take another stab at correcting that, or if you make a finding that the public notice has been, there's been a notice bust of some kind, you can continue a public hearing to a date certain in the near future, usually to the next regular planning commission meeting, or in some cases, you might continue it two months out. The second option that you have is to recommend approval as presented. That means no changes, what you saw is what you liked, and you want to send it to council as is with the recommendation that council approves it. The third is, after deliberation, if you find that the project complies or can comply with minimal conditions, you can include as part of your recommendation, conditions that council should consider as going forward tied to the approval of the project. In other words, in order for the project to be fully approved, and this will occur with things like the issuance of a building permit, or grading permit, or certificate of occupancy in the future, the applicant will have to demonstrate that they've met that condition of approval. The final option that you have, and this is probably the most strenuous, is to recommend denial. If the project is so deficient, if the project is just unworkable, unreadable, doesn't fit the criteria, and the applicant is showing no willingness to make corrections to that, you can send a recommendation to council for denial of the project. That's a serious thing. Council having to overcome a recommendation for denial from their planning commission is a big deal in municipal circles. Now, with the exception of plans for transitional mixed use of a property in a TMU overlay zone, all public hearings which come before the planning commission must go on for approval, or for hearings before council. This is why planning commission recommends a course of action on the land use application. Now, in the time I've been with the city, I have only seen one transitional mixed-use site plan come before planning commission, that was in December of 2017. What happens is, in an area that's got a TMU overlay zone upon it, someone comes in and applies for a site plan which shows how they're going to have both a commercial and a residential use function adequately on the property. That has to go to planning commission for approval, and if planning commission approves it, that's the end of the process for that project. It then goes on to either be constructed, or have whatever interior conversions need to happen, occur. That's the only case where planning commission is the decision-making body. All other public hearings that come before planning commission must go on to council. Now, one thing I should tell you here, this is where I conclude my presentation, but what you're looking at on this slide are the front covers of a series of documents that we have created, and when we reopen City Hall, these have been available for the last couple of years in kiosks here in the lobby at City Hall. These are what we call development assistance packets, and they are prepared based upon application types. They will walk an applicant through not only the public notice requirements that I just explained to all of you, they also have commonly used terms in planning, building, and engineering. They also have things like how to write a narrative, and most importantly, they include a schedule of what needs to be included in order to have a complete application. We regard that very important because the clock doesn't start ticking on our processing of an application until we can make a finding at the staff level that the application includes everything it needs to have in order for us to refer it out to referral agencies, collect their responses, organize them, create a staff report, and bring it forward to public hearing before planning commission and council. If any of you have not seen them, like I said, they are here at City Hall, I also have them in electronic formats. I am creating more of them all the time when I get a chance, and I can email to any of you who want them, the application packets that we have, development assistance packets that we have created on file right now, and all you have to do is let me know you want them. So with that, my presentation is complete. I am certainly happy to answer any questions that the planning commission may have, and with that, I will turn it over to our vice chairman.
Well, thank you, Patrick. Is Catherine Sellers here just yet? Are you there, Patrick?
I'm here, and I'm trying to see if Catherine is on.
Okay.
Let me stop Sheer for a moment. I have Catherine on, and I have allowed her to talk, so she can unmute herself and be with us, and I will go back to Sheer's screen.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm going to talk about, you have the memo from our office, and I hope it cured all your insomnia successfully, any stress you might be feeling and not sleeping from COVID, you're now fully, just got that next to your bed. But I would like to start to talk a little bit about rules regarding open meetings and open records, which is briefly mentioned in the memo, and then circle back to some of the things that Patrick was touching on regarding quasi-judicial actions. So to start off with, I'm sure you're all familiar with the Colorado Open Meetings Law, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Basically, what that law does is it says, every meeting has to be open to the public. The public has to be allowed to access meetings. They don't have to be allowed to participate necessarily, except in cases of public hearings, but they do have to be allowed to see their government in action. And it requires 24 hours' notice before any meeting of a local public body, including you all, you don't have too many emergency meetings, you keep your meetings pretty regular. And any type of meeting that notice is triggered if there's a quorum, or three or more members of the local public body, whichever is fewer, and in your case, it's going to be three, at which public business is going to be discussed, or any formal action would be taken. And so if there's two of you around, and you're talking about land use applications, which you probably shouldn't be, but let's say you are, that is not a public meeting that requires notice. If there's three or more of you around, and you're talking about Broncos football, or whatever, the weather, that's not a public meeting that requires notice either, because you're not discussing public business, and you're not taking any formal action. So it's only when you're sitting as the body and you're discussing public business that notice is required. You know, as I mentioned earlier, hopefully, you know, stay clear of discussing applications outside, typically when we're in City Hall, or when we're in this forum on Zoom. So, one thing to note is the law is changing in this area. The open meetings law always, or at least for as long as I can remember, designated a meeting as something that occurs electronically, so email, texts, anything, like along those lines. And so we are now seeing cases come down, right now, it's just from the district court and not from the Colorado Court of Appeals or Supreme Court, that are really targeting emails, and reply all emails, and the texts haven't quite reached that level, but I suspect that they'll get there. So always be super careful about how you communicate with other members of the planning commission. Try to filter all your communications through Patrick, you know, he may send out a packet, and you may have a question, don't hit reply all, just hit reply back to Patrick, so you can talk to him about your question, and you guys can discuss about whether or not something that should be raised with the whole body, and in the public meeting where the public can hear you discuss the issue. So just a little warning there that you need to be careful. The second caveat is related to the Colorado Open Records Act. So my memo doesn't discuss this, but it's worth mentioning that if we were to ever get a Open Records Act, which is basically, it's a public request for documents, and a lot of times, they ask for all communications on this specific topic. So when we get requests like that, we go into everyone's email, staff, your city email, everyone's, and we check for emails on that topic. And recently, I have had it happen, and it's not, it's not the first time, is that an open records request triggered a violation of the open meetings law, because a clandestine unnoticed meeting by email, which can't be noticed, obviously to the public, was uncovered through the Open Records Act request, and the entity is potentially exposed to a lawsuit under the Colorado Open Meetings Law for a violation. The Colorado Open Meetings Law is really, if you do violate it, it's pretty strict. The city would be subject to attorney's fees if we lost, so we try to avoid those kinds of things. So when you're communicating by email about stuff, even when you're communicating with Patrick, that's a public record, so you know, just be careful about what you say, just picture the whole world reading your email, and the applicant, and everybody in the audience reading your email, and decide what you want to put in it. So that's just a little fair warning there.
Catherine, can I interrupt you for just a second?
Go ahead.
Can I interrupt you for just a second? I wanted to make sure planning commission understood, this is also why we provided you with the @canyoncity.org email addresses for everyone. In the event that we do get an open records request, and those open record requests potentially involve emails that I've sent out to planning commission, or planning commission has sent out to me, they will only go as far as those @canyoncity.org email addresses. Your personal private email addresses from home or from work would not be subject to that, so you wouldn't have to worry about the whole world being able to read any of your personal stuff. That's why we set them up, and that's why we encourage you all to use them, and if you ever forget your password, or need something set up so that it alerts you when you've received a new email at that @canyoncity.org email address, let me know, I can put you in touch with Elijah Owens, our IT specialist, we can get that solved for you. But that is something that we definitely encourage you to use when acting as a member of the planning commission. Sorry to interrupt, Catherine.
No, no, that's okay, your point is well taken. Yeah, never conduct city business on your personal emails, because it actually could open up your personal emails to an open records request, which means you'd have to turn them all over to us, and we'd have to go through them all, which makes everyone uncomfortable. I've had to do that, it's no fun, so yeah, never use your personal email for city business, if you can avoid it. All right, any questions from planning commission on open meetings, open records? Not hearing anything, okay. So Patrick was talking a bit about, and I apologize for being late, but at the end, there was talking about quasi-judicial actions, and I want to take a quick step back and talk about the difference between the two, legislative and quasi-judicial. So legislative actions are exactly what they sound like. You actually, as a planning commission, do take some legislative action, you see amendments, text amendments to the code, so you consider that, that's a legislative recommendation that you make. Another legislative action is, is that you are authorized as the body that adopts the subdivision regulations, so that's a legislative action. Courts, you know, a local government's entitled to great deference when it takes a legislative action, and so courts are, you know, as we say, hands-off. If there's a procedural issue or something like that, they pretty much say, no, you're good. Quasi-judicial actions are kind of a, can be kind of a minefield for local bodies. And basically, it's quasi-judicial if you are applying criteria in the code, which Patrick talked about, to the facts of an application, and there's a public hearing involved, there's due process, there's a due process component to the action. And those are much more, those have a higher level of review at the court if they were to be challenged. And so we want to make sure that you understand the parameters of those actions, and the do's or don'ts of what's going on there. So one of the big don'ts is ex parte communication. And so an ex parte communication is any contact or conversation that's outside the hearing, basically, and it can be with the proponent of an application, it can be someone opposed to the application, it could be with anyone, even if the person doesn't have an opinion, it doesn't matter, it's any conversation outside the hearing. And so when you have a land use application for, you know, a special use review in front of you, you should not be discussing that with not only, you shouldn't discuss it with members of the planning commission, for reasons I'll talk about in a minute, you shouldn't discuss it with anyone outside the planning commission, except for staff. So if you have questions, or you think you want to need to talk through something with Patrick, you're free to do so, because it can negatively impact the decision-making process, and it also can diminish the due process due to the applicant and the public, because they don't get to be party to that conversation, they don't get to respond to it, they don't get to weigh in on what's being said, you're only getting whatever that person... You're only getting whatever that person's telling you. And so you could enter, you could expose the city actually and yourself to a due process violation. So it's really important that you just avoid those. And sometimes on issues that are, you know, highly contentious, it can be really hard. And you just have to explain to the person, look, if I have this conversation with you, like, it, it will, it, it makes the city look bad ultimately if I have this conversation with you because it'll, it'll likely come out that I had it. And you know, you don't, that doesn't do anybody any good. The other component is that you, if you have a significant enough conversation, you may have to recuse yourself. And so then if the person's trying to sway you, you're, you can't vote in their favor if you're not sitting there making the decision. So, um, ex parte communicate, the one thing that's really different between expert or from quasi judicial to legislative is legislative actions, you can talk to whomever you want, as much as you want about anything about the legislative action. So if someone comes up to you and they don't like a change in the subdivision regulations, you can talk to them ad nauseam about it if you want. So it's really only in the quasi judicial setting that you just can't discuss anything. The second component of quasi judicials or kind of things to avoid is conflicts of interest. And conflicts of interest kind of fall into two categories. There's the really obvious ones, like your brother has a land use application before the Planning Commission or, you know, someone, your business partner, someone you have a financial familial, a really close personal tie to relationship with. And then there's the more indirect relationships that you might have with someone. And those are where things can get kind of fuzzy. And so you really, if you find yourself in a situation like that, like maybe it was a former business partner that you don't speak to anymore because you had a huge blowout. And if you think that you cannot make an impartial, unbiased decision, you cannot basically apply the facts or apply the criteria to the facts of the application, then you can come to Patrick, you can come to me and we can talk it through and see what you want to do and see what your options are. A lot of times there are, you know, old relationships or connections. You don't, you know, you live in a medium-sized community, you're gonna have connections with people. And if there's ever an issue where you're like, well, I, I had this connection with this person or I want to explain it, it's always just best to just bring it up and talk to the commission about it. And because the commissioners as a body should really make the decision about recusal and whether or not someone should not, not be part of the decision-making if it puts too much risk in liability for the city to be part of that decision-making body. So it's always best to err on the side of caution, raise the issue. If you want to raise it in private, Patrick and I are here. If you want to raise it with the whole body and just be honest and open about whatever it is, then absolutely we encourage you to do that. And if you have those kind of direct conflicts of interest, then you should more than likely probably recuse yourself. And if you do recuse yourself, I typically advise and require that the person actually leave the room so you can't sit in the back and like make motions or shake your head or make faces at the rest of the commission about decisions that they're making or try to influence the decision in any way. So you can't go sit out in the audience and then come to the podium and tell the Planning Commission what you think they should do. The other issue in quasi judicial proceedings is prejudgment. And Patrick talked about this, touched on this just a little bit. You really want to avoid the appearance that you have prejudged an application. You're gonna have personal opinions about an application. You all live there, you know the area, you're gonna have feelings about, well, I think this should go here or that should go there, I don't think this is a good idea. Those are okay, but you have to be open when you get to the hearing that you're willing to hear all the testimony, all the evidence given before you and really apply the criteria to those facts. And I think Patrick touched on this a little bit about what's appropriate and what's not. And so you really have to be able to divide those personal feelings that you might have. If they don't, they're not relevant to the application. If this person cut you off the other day in their car, not relevant to the, you know, to a land use application. And so you may not like them, but they're here to present something. And so those things have to be put aside so that you're not exposing the city or yourselves to any kind of liability or risk. So those are kind of the three big cruxes of things to avoid during a quasi judicial decision-making process. You're not the ultimate decision-makers, but I will say that things that happen at Planning Commission can filter up to council and a lot of times influence how council makes decisions. And so Patrick does a really good job of like leading you guys through like applying, you know, he really lays out the criteria for you and lays out the facts and he does a really good job of that in his staff reports, making your jobs hopefully a little bit easier. But really reasoning out your decision is extremely helpful to council and also extremely helpful to the ultimate potential challenges that are out there because we rely on that entire record to defend the city. And so if, if you really lay out your reasoning for a decision, that, that benefits the city tremendously. So that's just another thing to think about when, you know, you get those staff reports. Patrick gives you a lot of information to process, but gives you really good framework to, to make those ultimate recommendations. And so just because you're the, you're not the decision-maker doesn't mean all these things aren't important that you, you do them as well and follow that because it filters up through council. So those are kind of the basics of quasi judicial and open meetings and open records. And so that's kind of a little bit of an orientation from the legal side of things and our recommendations on how to conduct yourself. So I'm happy to take any questions. I know it's super exciting material, so.
I have one, Catherine. This is Randy. The example that you gave us as far as quasi judicial, it's dated 2004, so not too much has been updated since then, or is there anything new? Or is this just general that we've, I guess, are going on? Is there any updates, I guess, is what I'm asking?
From what exactly?
The advising quasi judicial, the, basically the PDFs that Patrick had sent us.
Oh, the memo?
It's 19 hours.
Sorry about that. It's just dated, the magazine article's dated 2004.
Oh, I only, I don't know that I sent a magazine article over, so I'm not sure. Is that, that may have been in your packet.
Yeah, that was, I believe something that I attached. Catherine's memo came to me separately and I attached some other documents to the email I sent you.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. I just want to know if we had the most up-to-date versions of our.
I can go looking for something more recent than 2004, but I don't think the facts in there, in that particular article are gonna largely be superseded by anything more recent than that.
No, you know, Randy, there hasn't been a lot of, the quasi judicial law framework hasn't, honestly hasn't really changed in, in very much. I mean, there's little tweaks here and there, but nothing substantial has changed in the law for quite a long time.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty, pretty generalized. So yeah, I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Well, are there any other questions from Patrick or Catherine or anybody else on the, on the committee? I guess you know.
I put everybody to sleep.
Actually, this has been extremely helpful and especially with quite a few months under my belt. You know, it just all starts just, it's not as confusing as it was the first time I was trying to understand my duties. So it's, this is just so helpful.
Sure, and I appreciate that. And if you want, what I can do with Planning Commission in, in future months, if you want, is walk you through a particular type of application. If you want to really drill down into the merits of a particular application type, whether we're talking about annexation and zoning or rezoning or a major subdivision, I, I, I'm more than happy to bring that up and, you know, walk you through that process. I also have a presentation that I put together when I was in Parker about local government, the authorities that local government has, the powers that it has and the limitations that it has in as much as it has to relate itself under a subdivision of government arrangement to both a state and federal government. And I'm happy to put that, you know, dust that presentation off and if you'd like to give more of a governmental overview of the authorities that local government has, I'm more than happy to give you that presentation too.
That one sounds heavy, but yeah.
It is about a two-hour presentation. I'll warn you in advance. It is about a two-hour presentation.
Well, we have to feed them, Patrick, if you're gonna do that.
Yeah, well, and, and one of the things, this particular one comes with quiz questions and portions of it and I give away candy to people who get the quiz.
That's nice.
It's like, yeah, okay.
Or Paulie can bring donuts.
It'll be similar to a Halloween presentation then?
Well, we can do it that way if you want. If you all want to come and ask, we can do that.
Well, I was thinking about the nightmare part then the reward afterwards.
Actually, Patrick, I'm very open to lots of information. It's just, it all is so helpful to take our position seriously. So that and also going through the individual different scenarios, the different packets. I would really like that one too.
Sure. Well, in that case, what I will do is as we go through, because right now with COVID and whatnot, we've, we've got something of a lull in applications that have come through the door, probably not unexpectedly. And with that in mind, as we may have a couple of months in the near future where we probably won't have public hearings scheduled, I can certainly bring you these presentations and, and give them to you. And whether we have to do them by teleconference or, or hopefully with the governor's orders expiring on the 26th, we get together in person and I can give you these PowerPoints. I'm more than happy to do that in months where we don't have public hearings to consider.
Can I suggest that maybe the two-hour one, we could spread it out into two different nights, maybe back to back?
I can, I can certainly do, look at how we could break that up or I could look at how to maybe condense it into maybe less, something less than two hours or maybe more approaching an hour.
Okay, yeah, two hours might be a bit when you're just looking at a screen.
Or, or if we could, I, we might be able to start early and I might be able to get some money to, to feed you all and maybe go from five to seven or something.
Food is always good.
Yeah, food is good. But yeah, just whatever is convenient for the rest of them and especially for you is, it'll work for me.
I'm, I'm happy to do that. My theory is you folks are my planning commission, so I need you to be as informed as possible to help the process out. So I'm, I'm your resource.
Okay, I like, thank you.
Thank you, Patrick.
Sure.
Um, I had a question, Patrick. This is DeeDee about the, your slides that you presented and particularly the one that was titled Conduct to Public Hearings and you had the do's and the don'ts. Are you able to send that presentation or, or at least that slide? That I just thought that would be a, a good thing for me to look at frequently.
Sure. No, I'm more than happy to, I can convert this into a PDF and email that to everyone. If you want, I'll, I'll email that to all of you.
Yeah, good suggestion, DeeDee. Thanks.
Not, not a problem. I'll get that emailed out first thing tomorrow.
Okay.
Are there any things else on the agenda? Any other questions or concerns or talking points anybody wants to bring up?
No, I want to.
Happy Earth Day.
Yeah, I want to thank Catherine too. Catherine, you are very easy to follow. You do a good presentation.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
I need slides so I can match Patrick next time.
Yeah, but you did make it very descriptive and easy, so thank you.
Well, I'm here too, if you have any questions, anytime, so.
I have one more. And it's, it's, so it's, it's nothing to what you guys presented, it's just in some of the stuff that I was reading. And it was, it's titled Fail-Proof Behaviors for Great Planning Commissioners. And it talks about the Planning Commission meetings. And so I just want to make sure that I'm respectful of our chairman. And on item number four, it says, "Don't speak until recognized by the chairman."
Oh, yes.
I'm, I'm not sure what I should, what that, what does that mean or what does that look like?
We're to raise our hand is what it says, yeah.
The problem that we have, I'm sorry, Patrick, that the problem that we have with Zoom right now is we don't have, at least I don't have control, Patrick does. And there is a, an icon down below that you can raise your hand and the chairman can call on you. But this was, as it was a training session, I don't necessarily think that applies, but normally the Roberts Rules possibly would. So I think in the other situation, if we're doing Zoom, yes, chairman or whoever's in charge calls on the people. That just eliminates all the extra chatter.
Well, but I think she's talking about at the meetings, isn't she? Because we're not doing that at our actual meetings.
I don't know that it's, it's been as much an issue at meetings in the past. With council, you generally have several people who want to interject a thought or ask a question simultaneously. And what they have done in the council chambers is put in a system where there's a little button in front of the, the seat where they're sitting that registers that they are, they have a question would like to be recognized and then the mayor will call on them. I think we could probably have our IT folks train you folks on how to use that system as well so that if it ever became an issue and there was a, a big controversial hearing and several of you had questions of an applicant or a member of the audience who got up to speak, you could use that system and the chairman could, could call upon you and recognize you one at a time.
Okay, that might be more comfortable than, I sometimes hate to interject because I feel like I'm almost going over somebody.
And I, I can appreciate that completely. So when we get back to holding meetings in the council chambers, I, I will ask Elijah to come and demonstrate for all of you how that system works.
Okay.
Okay, Patrick, do you have anything else to add?
No, nothing else for me. I think you heard the good news about our comprehensive plan and our Title 16 and 17 revisions. We're, we're very pleased. I'm gonna check the references tomorrow, like I said. And between that and if we have to negotiate any deal points in the, the proposed budget that they've sent us, I think we should be off to the races next month with updating everything.
Super.
And hopefully we'll all be together too, so.
Yeah, yes.
If there are no other agenda items or nobody wants to add anything, I believe our next meeting is on the 27th of April. Is that correct? Or 27th of May, I'm sorry.
The next regularly scheduled meeting would be May 27th. Now, since that happens to fall the week of Memorial Day, if anyone is gonna be out that week or would like me to reschedule, let me know and I can look at possible alternative dates and make sure that the alternative date is something that Catherine could be at as well. Should we need, should we have to, a public hearing that we have to hold?
Oh, hey, Patrick, this is Gary. I will definitely not be at that meeting.
Okay, okay. So it looks like we may need to, if we want to have a quorum, we may need to look at an alternate date. I will see what I can look at for potentially the 20th of May. Now, I know council has a vision committee meeting on the third Wednesday of the month at four. So if we're back to meeting at the council chambers, I may have to make sure that the powers that be know Planning Commission is planning to come in at six that day.
Well, we're before them. All right. Okay, if nobody has any other questions or concerns, then I propose we adjourn this meeting for today, April 22nd.
Okay, thank you all for, for coming in, for dialing in.
Thank you, Patrick. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.